Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
All right, good morning. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the May 3 meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our word for the day is Proverbs 14:22-24. If you plan to do evil, you will be lost; if you plan to do good, you will receive unfailing love and faithfulness. Work brings profit, but mere talk leads to poverty. Wealth is a crown for the wise; the effort of fools yields only foolishness. And our dog warden, Tim Pillblad, has our dog from the kennel this morning. He's a wild one.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a Jack Russell terrier, female. A lot of energy you can see. She's in kennel 29, available on Friday the 5th. We had a busy weekend. We picked up over 15 dogs this weekend, so we are full. There's 37 dogs in the kennel right now. So come see us.
Yeah. She had to have the last word, right?
Yeah.
She's a spunky one. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Okay, are you ready?
Okay.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Okay, appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under Airport #8, authorized application to ODOT Office of Aviation for fiscal year '18 funds in amount of $176,466 for lighting improvements at airport. Total project cost is $183,648 with local share of $9,182 in new LED taxiway guidance signs and public apron to enhance user safety during nighttime use.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, this is actually kind of nice where it's 95-5 money, 25% local, 95% feds.
Right. On things that we have to maintain, so...
Debted to the airport for a long, long, long time.
Pardon me?
Debted to the airport and the FAA for a long time.
Every time we take federal funds, we are on the hook for 20 years.
Clock starts again.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Okay, under the Commissioners, #9, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
There is no personnel summary sheet today. We may not need an executive session unless our legal counsel, are you going to ask for legal... No? Okay, so there will be no executive session today.
Okay. #10, approve and waive the reading of the minutes of April 26, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
#11, receive and journalize Luther Ditch petition from Pittsfield Township through Stormwater District to restore original flow line in the drainage channel, removing trees and brush as necessary in the drainage way. Viewing will be held June 6 at 10:00 a.m. Hearing will be June 20 at 9:30 a.m. Notice to residents, May 17, and publication will be May 24 and 31.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, #12, approve contract modification #2 to KS Associates in Illyria in the amount of $8,879 to modify Cooper Foster Park project limits by extending approximately 150 feet to east, so new roadway will transition into new Cooper Foster construction plans in Lorraine and Amherst to be paid from account #MVGT. Authorize engineer to execute on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is a long drawn-out process on this road. My gosh. I think we've started this when we first got here. They've been talking about it.
Or maybe before, since they built the Super K, but it took a while, but we were able to secure a couple million dollars in funding from Noaka.
Great.
So hopefully by 1919, this project will be completed. Now, if we can only get money from Mobile Land Avenue to Broadway, that would be wonderful.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Okay. #13, approve and enter into LPA agreement with Greenman Peterson Incorporated in Brea in the amount of $199,269 to provide construction administration and inspection services for Baumhart Road resurfacing and safety improvement project. Brownhelm to be paid from account #EngineerProjects. Authorize the engineer to execute on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
#14, award contract to Melway Paving in Homerville in the amount of $569,000 for the 2017 chip and seal. Three bids were opened on April 25, this being the most responsive complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed on or about May 23 and complete honor before September 1. Authorize the administrator to notify auditor to release retainage at completion of the project.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
#15, under the Sheriff Department, apply for 2018 Selective Traffic Enforcement Program and 2018 Impaired Driving Enforcement Grant from Ohio Department of Public Safety. This is a reimbursable grant paid from account #Sheriff, salary, and designated traffic blitzes begin October 1, 2017 through September 30 of 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez is on vacation this week. Mr. Ennis?
I have no report.
Okay. All right. Before I do my report, when Team Lorraine County disbanded, our Community Development Department had to step up and start taking care of things that would otherwise be handled by them. So Jerry Good is here today, and he's prepared to give us an update on what we're doing in our Community Development Department. Jerry?
Thank you, Commissioner, and all of the Commissioners for allowing me to be here this morning and speak on behalf of our department, especially the Economic Development Team that we have. I'm very proud of the work that they're doing. A couple of things, we've been really active on in economic development in the county. You spoke on the fact that back on June 20 of 2016, our department took over some of the responsibilities of what Team Lorraine County was doing in interacting with Team NEO, which is the Regional Economic Development Group, and Jobs Ohio. So one of those duties that we have is responding to leads. And I'm happy to say we haven't missed an opportunity to respond to a lead either for a site or a building. We are averaging anywhere between one and two responses every week that we have responded to. This particular week, we have two. One was done yesterday, and there'll be one completed for Thursday. Some of these responses require a lot more work than just submitting a site or a building. A lot of times, they come with what's called a request for information, and that can be quite extensive for a particular site. The one yesterday had about three pages of utility information and things we had to verify in order to respond with the site that we had. So we are, your team is keeping up with those and has done a real good job of not missing one of those deadlines. The other thing we're working on is the state of Ohio maintains a site and building inventory database. Recently, in the past month, the state changed sources of who they were using for that database. Previously, we used a product called Insight, which was by Atlas Communications. It was a very good database system. However, it didn't have GIS capabilities built into it. And so the state has moved over to a new product called GIS Planning, or Zoom Prospector. Now, this new tool allows for GIS information to be gathered on the fly through the tool based on the address and the site of either the building or the greenfield site. So in other words, anything you might want to know about the workforce, characteristics of that particular address, you can define that, and on the fly, this tool will bring all of that information up. So it's a great enhancement in bringing us up to the 21st century. Previously, my experience, I know there have been others using this tool for about eight years, but they were people like Orange County LA. They were big, big communities around the country. That technology's finally found its way down to what we call LITO's, Local Economic Development Organizations, and that's who we are. So currently, we have 237 properties in our database for Lorraine County. Out of those 237, 48 are active. What I mean by active, they are actively being marketed for sale, and that all of the information necessary to market them for sale for utilities are in the system. We have 189 inactive properties, but I want to define what inactive means. It could have been a property that was listed as active, and somebody has bought it and put it back into productive use. We don't remove it from the database, because once we have all that utility information about that site, we don't want to lose that in case that property becomes available for sale a second time or a third time. So we keep it in the database as inactive, but we try to keep the utility information up to date. And last, one of the projects we've taken on is we're currently inventoring all of the industrial parks throughout the entire county to understand how many partials are currently occupied, how many are not occupied, so that we can establish a baseline on where we are. We continue to hear we don't have enough product to sell, either newer buildings. A lot of the building inventory we have is old. That's not unique to us. I've sat in positions with the state, and I've done it at other local communities, and that's a constant conversation people have. You know, people are looking for buildings that are 10 to 15 years old, at the oldest many times, and trying to find those properties or have them available. So two things we've been doing is inventoring all of our parks, so we'll know what we have in a way of available space and if we need to create new space. The other is, since I got here back in December of 2014, I've kept track of every lead that's come through our department for buildings and sites. The purpose of that is we have that data should a conversation ever arise about building a spec building, because then we'll be able to look at historical data that's actual and say, "This is what people are looking for." So we have that. That database has been maintained and is up to date. So that's kind of what I wanted to come and talk to you this morning, and thank you for the opportunity. And most off, the most thing I'd like to say is thank you for your support. You're great to work with.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update, Jerry. Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate what you're doing, Jerry. I just wanted to ask you quickly, obviously with these televised meetings, you know, we have a chance to educate the public and the taxpayers about what we do. You know, folks think that you wave a magic wand and these economic development deals come together. Just, if you could, not too detailed, but a little more detailed about how the process works, because there's so many different parts throughout the process that can fall apart. Even at the very end, the banker's saying, "Sorry, we're not giving you the money." Your business plan doesn't measure up.
Exactly. And I don't want to give the appearance that all we react to are the leads that come through Jobs Ohio and/or Team NEO. We're constantly working on projects here within the county that come to us through any number of sources. They could come through a contact to you. It could come through a contact of somebody picking up the phone. It could come to us through one of our partners. We have a number of economic development folks at the local level in these communities that will call us from time to time. Got several of those going on right now. If you're talking about attraction, which is primarily what Team NEO and Jobs Ohio are working on, that's about 20% of development projects out there. 80% of the projects come from people already here. They're the companies like Riddell or Bendix or smaller companies that actually are growing. And that's where 80% of your job creation comes from. And these are national numbers that average not only in Ohio at that, but nationally at that. So if you're talking about attraction, it's always a matter of keeping from being eliminated. So this is, you know, when we respond to these leads, that's just the start. It could be four or five different contacts with that project from that point on as they try to go through the process of trying to decide if you're the right site or not. So that's when it really gets interesting, you know. I have worked on projects as large as $500 million that lasted an entire year, and you could fill a four drawer filing cabinet with the information that was provided to that company during that process. So that's the attraction side. And then the other side is working with our local companies and trying to find the tools. And in most cases, that's a matter of listening to the company. What are their needs? Is it a workforce that they're trying to find adequate people to grow their business? Is it finance? I happen to believe finance is a critical key component to every project, because if you don't have the money, you can't move it forward. So we have a really good experienced team around finance. I've done a number of projects with that. We have Reese Dunton on our team. Reese just got his certification this past year in Economic Development Finance, so he's a great asset in our team. Max Upton, our other ED specialist, is completing his master's degree, and he's been through Economic Development Finance training at the master's level. So we have a really good team. But it is a process economic development. It's, I wish you could turn a switch and you could just make it happen, but, you know, and a lot of people don't understand, when you do develop an industrial park, the average time to fill out that park is at least 15 years. Can go 20 years. And that's if everything falls in line. So it's not a short-term investment. It's a long-term investment, but it is one we need to take a look at from time to time to make sure we have product to sell.
Could you also explain, I mean, because you have extensive experience at this, how, you know, you don't read in the paper every day about this company's looking at Lorraine County, or this company's looking at this community, and, you know, and sometimes the general public thinks, "Well, why aren't you telling us about this? Or aren't you doing something about economic development?" Explain, when you have these conversations with these business owners, how they don't want Jerry or the Commissioners running off to the papers saying, "Hey, here's a story for tomorrow's paper. This company's talking to us."
Yeah. I think many times we think, you know, the business should be open and sharing. But I'll give you a good example of that. I worked on a project several years ago before I got to Lorraine County. Had the only site in Ohio. The company was Nestle. And Nestle was looking to build a $500 million manufacturing center for processing flavored coffee dairy products. You probably know them as Coffee Mate. At that particular project in time, we had to find, sign a non-disclosure statement, an NDS. Why would Nestle want to be so secretive about their project? Well, there's a number of reasons. In that industry, I learned a lot while I was going through this project. That is an eight to nine billion dollar industry, of which Nestle had 72% market share.
Wow.
A 2% shift in that market share was $400 million in profit to the company. So they didn't want a lot of people, their competition mainly, knowing what they were doing. The other thing is, when you talk about workforce, when a company makes a decision that they're at a point in time that they've got to consolidate operations or create a whole new facility because they don't have facilities that can meet demand or logistically meet demand, today it isn't as big a thing as it was probably eight years ago when diesel fuel was running $4 to $5 a gallon. It made all the world the difference where you were located, because transportation costs were some of the biggest costs these companies had. But when you're talking about workforce, sometimes the companies want to have time to work with their employees to get them educated on what they're doing and why they're doing it. To have an article published in a paper by Nestle at that time that would have said, "We're going to take these three plants, and we're going to consolidate them into one," you would have had three plants and a lot of people, you know, really excited about what's going on and what about my job, and rightfully so. People would worry about that. So a lot of times with these companies, the reason they want the information kept confidential, it's for competitive reasons and it's for internal reasons around their workforce. You know, who are they going to transfer? Who are they not going to be able to transfer? And that goes on all around the country. That's not unique to us. It's companies' decisions. We just had one of those recently here in a community. If you look at Riddell, who made a decision to invest here in Lorraine County and build a new facility and move people from outside the suburbs of Chicago here. You know, so they don't want a lot of that information public at times. The other thing is, they don't want a lot of their financial statements public. But there is a misnomer around that for a lot of people in creating organizations. The Ohio Revised Code allows for intellectual property protection. So people's financial records are protected by Ohio law, and that's something people need to be aware of as well, when they think somebody should just open up their books to them. That's not what the Ohio law says.
And just, I guess, a final point, and I think it can't be stressed enough, the importance of retention, and from that retention comes expansion. Every time I look at national reports, they say over and over again, and some of the most educated professors who study these things say over and over again, that the public perception continues to be, "Bring me in those new jobs," when in fact overwhelmingly, the majority of the new jobs are going to come from the companies that are already here.
And that's exactly right. 80% of all the job creation here in Lorraine County we're going to get is going to come from companies already here. And another good example of that is Ford, here in our community, and the expansion they did at the Avon Lake facility in investing, I think, two years ago, they invested $128 million. Last year, they invested $250 million. They brought an assembly line back from Mexico and put it into that plant. So they are definitely on our radar, and we are out trying to work with our companies. And we take a proactive approach to that by trying to have an active business retention and expansion program, where we go out and call on these companies and mainly listen to what's going on and where there's opportunities, so...
Yeah, because I think a lot of existing businesses, they experience the same frustration consumers do. You know, when you call the cable company or you call the phone company and say, "Well, the competitors are offering me this great discount. I've been a loyal customer for 10, 15, 20 years." "Oh, well, we can do that for you too," you know, "to keep you on board." And that's why I think for the existing businesses, it's so important that we have those ongoing conversations about how are we doing? How can we help? But there's also the other side of the coin, and I think it's important for people to know the harsh reality of sometimes the companies don't even reach out to us, and they've already made a business decision to move or close.
Yeah. And that's particularly troublesome sometimes when you're dealing with international companies. One of the things we just did recently is inventory all the international companies that are here in Lorraine County. And I'm working with Mini McLaughlin, who is our new international rep through Team NEO, Jobs Ohio, to make sure that we're not only having a conversation with these companies here, but helping support them to carry that message to their parent company overseas. So you have companies here like Bendix, which is a German company. BASF is a German company. So we have them inventoried. We're paying attention to that on the BR&amp;E side of things. But yeah, how do you make sure you can have that communication? We don't, we want to be helpful enough that we don't get in the way of their conversation, but we also want to be helpful enough to not have them believe we take them for granted. And so doing those calls is critical to dealing with that, or, you know, responding to that.
Okay. Thanks, Jerry.
Great update.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. No overtime for me this week. Normal week. I attended a couple fundraiser. Dennis Will had a steak fry over at DeLuca's. It was really good, well-attended. And Lorraine Dums had a brunch at Jack Loaf, and it was delicious. And then yesterday, I got to do one of the fun things that I get to do as a Commissioner. They invite me up to the 5th floor Solid Waste Department to judge the calendar contest. So we did that yesterday. We had almost 900 entries from kindergarten, first grade to 12th grade, so that was all taken care of. So I'm sure Brandy will be down one of these days to give us a slideshow presentation like she usually does to show what we picked. So, and then I got this really nice email that Auditor sent down regarding our dog kennel. Just, I'm going to read it to you. It says, "Thank you for posting license information on your website. Our four-year-old grandson left the gate open, and the puppy took off running. The other grandchildren went out on their bikes. My husband took off in his truck, hunting for her, all to no avail. The children were in tears, thinking she got hit by a car. Two boys found her, called the police, and was able to return her safe and sound, all in 20 minutes since she was lost. Thank you for the connections allowing this to occur. She has chewed her tag pretty well, making it difficult to read, but we are in the process of etching the..." of etching the numbers on the back to help. I never realized how important the license is." So when your dog runs away and it has a dog license on it, it can be returned to you just that quickly. They have the database. They do it right in their car now. You know, all the technology is there. So very important. If you don't have your dog license, it's a great way to keep them safe from harm and they don't end up in the dog kennel or worse yet like they thought hit by a car. So, end of my report.
Great. Busy week. I always thank you to the Chamber of Commerce, the Realtors Association, the BIA hosting Elected Officials event at Parker's. Tavern in Avon Lake. Like to thank Grace Calucci, Director of NOAACA, for presenting NOAACA 101 to all the businesses, understanding how the federal dollars work in regards to getting roads done, interchanges done, sewer work done.
Generating jobs.
Generating jobs at the same time. Also had the opportunity to present a proclamation, Workers Memorial Day in Lorraine at City Hall on Friday at 5:00. Always good attendance. Like to thank Lorraine Police Department, their honor guard, for doing a great job. Also that night, Dennis Will, great steaks at his fundraiser. Also attended the Hispanic Conference meet and greet at Days Inn in Elyria. An opportunity to speak to some of the folks who were participating in it on Saturday. So I guess he had a great turnout at the gala. Sunday, unbelievable day. Lions pancakes as always, great. The Dems, FOPA Lodge at Lorraine spaghetti dinner. The chief brunch for police chiefs of Lorraine County. Also attended Tom Borowitz, who's a bailiff and Judge Mihawk's court in Lorraine, and also a radio personality, NWOBL DLW. During the Polish show on Sunday, led the charge with the Wilbers, raising money for the Honor Flight. So great job by all of them. The food, again, always wonderful. Congratulations to everyone. Yesterday was Election Day for those elected, re-elected, and those who will no longer be serving. Thank you. Again, poor turnout. It's tough to believe that, you know, in this country, you'd have, you know, 8, 9, 10% turnout on Election Day. Also, this coming Monday, May 8th, as most of you are aware of, I've been a pretty active proponent of the medical marijuana push in Ohio for the last decade, working with John Pardea's wife Linda and the Ohio Rights Group and multiple other organizations over the years. Ohio does have medical marijuana coming forward. The state legislature put that piece together. Monday, May 8th, there's going to be a fundraiser at Town Hall Restaurant in Cleveland. Bobby George's place, great place to eat at, by the way. It's the Medical Cannabis Education Scholarship Program fundraising event. The Ohio Rights Group and Greensome Industries are sponsoring this fundraising event. The proceeds will pay to educate the next generation of doctors and nurses. There's a Medical Cannabis Education symposium, May 31st to June 2nd, Columbus, Ohio. And there are certain requirements our doctors and nurses are going to have to attain to be able to actually prescribe the medical marijuana under the state legislature. Because you were there when that was passed, weren't you? Or was that passed after? You were there when they passed that.
Yeah, I was here. I wasn't there.
Okay.
I didn't have to worry about sleeping on the couch.
Yeah, exactly. I don't have that issue. My wife doesn't always agree with me, but still, what? So it makes it interesting. But yeah, if anybody would like to attend, it's only $15 a ticket. Again, going to a good cause. Those of us who have supported the medical marijuana cause over the year, this is going to help fund our doctors and nurses to get the additional training that they need entering this field, so. End of my report.
Yeah, well, you know, and I say that jokingly, being married to an addiction counselor, but I can tell you that when I served as a state rep, I got a number of anonymous letters from people who told me that I'm a well-known person in the community and I have a medical condition and this seems to help my medical condition and I have to, you know, kind of get my access to what I need to help out with that. And now with everything being, you know, approved by the legislature, obviously, we need to make sure everything, you know, stays in line. And the reservation, however, I continue to have is just, I'm concerned about increased use by the youth who may see it through the lens of, well, the adults say it's okay, so it must be okay for me to use too.
Well, in this case, that are you, Commissioner? This is medical marijuana, so it's doctor prescribed. That's what the training's for.
Right.
You're not going to take care of the black market stuff.
No, it's always going to be out there. It's always going to be out there. But yeah, I would end up sleeping on the couch, I think, if I ended up coming out in support of that. Anyhow, really enjoyed the elected officials reception put on by the chamber and as Commissioner Kallo pointed out, seeing Grace Calucci there from NOAACA, putting on a good presentation as to the importance of communities supporting the organization, making decisions about the road projects in our region and putting a lot of people to work in the process. Government in action. And one thing I guess I realized this week with all the events that my colleagues went to and I went to is, you know, how engaged this board is in the community and how involved we are in community events and activities and how we're constantly out there meeting with the public. Something that I think most people are aware of and appreciate. Attended the Avon Lake Business Expo in Avon Lake. Had a chance to meet with a lot of small businesses there. It was a very strong turnout. In fact, a lot of folks were joking, they had to park in Bay Village to get to the expo because it was hard to find a parking spot around the Springer Town Hall Center there. The Workers Memorial Event on Friday held on the square in Elyria. I think we often don't realize how many workers throughout this country, throughout the course of a year, go to the job and, you know, they don't necessarily work in first responder jobs where those families realize there's a risk that their loved one may not come home, but there are people working in other capacities in the workforce and you expect them to come home and sometimes they don't. And, you know, that's inherent dangers of the workplace. And thank goodness for labor and all that labor's done over the years to make the workplace safer so that people actually come home with their limbs attached and they actually do make it home at the end of the workday. Dennis Will had a very successful steak fry as well, too. Our prosecutor, very widely supported throughout the community for all the great work that he does. And needless to say, his staff is greatly overworked and being overrun by this heroin and opiate epidemic that's taking place. And it's good to see that they're getting some additional funding to help support their efforts to get the drug dealers off the street and so they're not breaking into our homes or killing our loved ones. Charlie Neff, I guess officially retired. In the past couple days, Charlie with the mental health board all those years and always enjoyed working with Charlie. Very dedicated to helping so many in this community with the challenges of mental health. Was unable to attend the CHIP Hispanic Conference. Have been there in the past, though. I know we helped provide some sponsorship for that to support them and all that they do for the Hispanic community. Lakefront Lorraine County in Vermillion, Saturday at the Gardener's Fair at Sailor Way Middle School. Very good turnout for that Gardener's Fair. We had a booth over there and we were in the ideal location to get, catch people as they were coming around the corner to go to the other wing where some of the booths were and able to have people participate in giving us feedback on what they thought should be done with Lorraine County's lakefront and just had a really good turnout for that. Also wanted to let everybody know, the next feedback opportunity for our Lakefront Lorraine County initiative will be at 6:00 PM on Thursday, tomorrow, at the Sheffield Lake Community Center. Should be about an hour to an hour and a half, no more than that. But please come out. We'll be giving you some ideas on some of the things that we're looking at, but most importantly, gathering feedback on the vision of Lorraine Countyans for their lakefront. And there is a grant that the commissioners received for that. And it's a great opportunity for us to put together a plan. And basically because of the grant, there weren't really much in the way of costs involved to us, other than I think we put about $2,000 on the table to, when we applied for that grant. Sorry, guys, I have a long report. It's been a busy week.
Overtime for you.
That's right. Overtime for me, absolutely. Lorraine Dems had a very successful brunch down there at Jack Lope. If you haven't had a chance to make it down for a nice lakeside dinner sometimes with your spouse or friends or neighbors, that's probably the only place.
It's a front week still.
Yes, and I'll, I'm talking about that.
Okay, good. Sorry.
You'll be telling me to shut up at some point. I was unable to make the Lions, there are all these breakfasts on Sunday morning. Let's see, the Lions pancake breakfast, the polka brunch, and I understand the police chiefs also had a breakfast as well, too. Wasn't able to make those, but I think Mr. Kallo did. He put on another five pounds just from breakfast, I think, on Sunday morning. Hit all of them.
My brother ain't well. I took two ghosts to my brother.
And then the FOPA spaghetti dinner, which I think I pulled in a lot just as you were pulling out. Grabbing more carbs for the day on Sunday. Once again, trying to support all the community efforts, being engaged in the community, talking to people in the community. That's what we try to do each and every day in this capacity. Avon Lake High School held its Academic Achievement Dinner. That's one of the just nicest events of the year that I attend. They must have had 400 people there recognizing the students for their academic achievement. And the really neat thing is that the students actually select and nominate teachers who had an influence on them. And I used to share those comments every single year with my colleagues in the legislature who, for some reason, weren't appreciative of our public school teachers. But just, teachers have a big impact on kids and shaping their lives and, you know, believe in our kids at times when the kids don't believe in themselves. And it's a very honorable profession. But great event there. It's one of the few, really, that's held in a state like this. But it's nice to see the smiling faces. You know the future is bright when you see the talent that is there and what the future holds for us, I think, is very, very bright. Had the opportunity to be on WOBL and the Cool Cat. We were there talking about Restaurant Week. And that was quite enjoyable. Our Restaurant Week continues through Sunday. And a lot of the restaurants, we have nine participating restaurants. If you'd like to learn more about it, visit Lorraine County. That doesn't mean visit the site. It's actually visitlorranecounty.com/locoeats, L-O-C-O eats. And you can learn more about the nine participating restaurants, the menus that have been set up, multiple courses, some have three, some have four. Mostly under $33, $35. I think a couple places included wine, so you'll have to check to find out where they're at. But had a great experience over the weekend. Went over to one of the restaurants to participate and that was part of my anniversary dinner, too. Made one year. So proud of myself.
I am proud of you.
You're proud of me?
Proud of her.
Yeah, yeah. I tell you, yeah, well, yeah. I made out a lot better on that deal than she did.
Yep.
And so, and I also want to thank the folks over at the Cool Cat and WOBL, you know, and even our local radio stations here. I had the opportunity to be on WNZN. That's 89.1, I think it is. Yeah, power radio there. And local radio is just really important. You know, these stations go out and they secure their licenses to serve the community interest and the public interest, but unfortunately, so few are doing that nowadays because of mass ownership of these stations, group ownerships. But it's nice to have the local radio stations with still the local flavor and appeal. And I know this board's always been very supportive of the local radio stations in our community. Once again, investing money in our community, turning those dollars over locally. Had the opportunity to meet with Elaine Georges, Georges, with, just having some conversations about the addiction challenges that we face in the county and how to deal with those moving forward. Main Street Elyria continues to be very active and working on improving business opportunities in the downtown area of Elyria. The Pizza Challenge, Sunrise Rotary had a pizza challenge over at Nick Abraham just yesterday. All the local pizza places were out there, having people sample their pizza. Can't thank Nick Abraham enough. Talk about his dealership and all the car dealerships, how they give back to the community. And, you know, I know when we are going through those tough economic times and car dealerships are struggling too, but they always seem to step up to play. You know, you'll see the cars you can win at the church festivals and Nick opens up his showroom, literally moves all those cars out of the showroom. They bring the tables in, bring all the pizzas in. Just a true community business. I talk about there's businesses in the community, then there's community businesses. There's a big difference. And Nick, Nick Abraham are certainly one of those businesses. Looking forward to the Cinco de Mayo Dinner tonight on the 3rd of May. So, I don't know if I, what's three in Spanish? Trace? Trace de Mayo Dinner tonight? Said it's Cinco de Mayo Dinner, but then the parade's coming up over the weekend. Also, I saw that the $64 billion state budget made its way through the House. It's now going over to the Senate, which, as we all know, the Senate will make all kinds of changes. But I think it's important to point out, you know, local governments and schools aren't seeing more funding. In fact, some will be seeing less. So expect more levies to be coming your way, you know, as the governor likes to push everything down to the local level and force the local burden on local taxpayers instead of Columbus doing what it should be doing, and that is investing in safety in our communities and investing in education for our kids. And congratulations to everyone who participated in the elections. I realize there's always winners and losers, but, you know, running for public office takes a lot of dedication and sometimes a lot of courage. But just want to commend everybody who participated and the voters have spoken. And obviously, it was an off year, so seeing 7% wasn't exactly exciting, but then again, there weren't many issues to vote on. I know in Avon Lake, I had no issues whatsoever, candidates to vote on at all, so. But, so Madam President, you want me to finish up? I'm done? Okay.
You sure?
Pull the rug out.
Where's that, where's that cutoff mic thing?
You know, as a commissioner, I don't do anything, you know, so that was just proof I don't do anything for the week, so.
Okay, you're going to get comp time next week.
Thank you. I get comp time?
Yeah.
That's in a federal bill, trying to replace overtime with comp time.
Right, right. Okay.
Board Correspondents.
I move that we approve the board correspondence and waive the reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Any public comment today?
Public comment? Anybody wishing to come up to talk to the board about any particular, anything in particular? Nothing? Okay, we have no executive session, which is very odd, so I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorrenecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioner's page and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.